Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here this evening for the City Council meeting and public hearing of June 2, 2025, for the city of Alpharetta. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and note for record that all members of council are present accounted for except for Councilman Will and Councilman Mitchell, who neither one will be able to join us this evening. As always, we start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance, so if you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America. It is usually the mother for which it stands, or the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So to get this meeting started, our first agenda item is for boards and commissions. We have a few commissioners we need to swear in this evening, so if the three of you would be willing to join me up front, please, we'll take care of this little bit of business.
Thank you, Deanna. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you once again for serving your community. Just so anyone here may not be familiar with how the city of Alpharetta operates, we do have over 470 employees here in the city of Alpharetta, but a great deal of the work that takes place in this community is also done by volunteers, people like these three people who are serving on commissions and boards in the city of Alpharetta because they care about our community and are willing to dedicate their time to do so. So we'll be swearing these three in. You've each got a copy, right? We found it goes much smoother when everybody has it in front of them. So I'll begin, and I'll read a line, and then you can fill in the blanks as necessary for your roles. So the first step will be the oath of office for the Recreation Board of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. I state your name hereby accept the honor of serving as a board member of the Recreation Board of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. Now, all of you, you can do it all at once. Well done. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and I shall support the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the Constitution and laws of the United States of America. Further, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I shall faithfully perform the duties of a Recreation Board member, regularly attend meetings, uphold the ideals of community and service, act and conduct business in accordance with the city's code of ethics and conduct, and support the charter and laws of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia. So sworn this 19th day of May, 2000. This is not the 19th day of May. June 22nd. Okay. So sworn this 22nd day of June, 2025. Okay. Thank you. See, I screwed it all up. So sworn this 2nd day of June, 2025. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. Don't run too far.
So next item up on our agenda this evening is the work session items. First item under work session items is the fiscal year 2026 budget. Director Harris?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second workshop to discuss the budget and follow in sort of what we've done in the past and prior years, we've had the second workshop is not quite go through all the detail that we went at the first workshop, but have a little summary and then open it up to questions and primarily discuss the operating initiatives, capital initiatives, and what things you see with the budget document itself and the budget book. So in your packet is the agenda, I mean, is the actual presentation same as last week, and I'm going to just skip over to slide nine, just sort of just to give me a friendly reminder that although I, this slide that toes our militerate history and, there it is, and all the wonderful things we did in those years with that.
We can see it this.
Structure, yes. There it is, and black, blue, yellow, green, all kinds of colors. You know, I think it's to somewhat highlight the great story of Alpharetta and what we've been able to do as well with the bond issuances and how we've had to, how we've responded with our salaries and our compensation package for our employees and all that that we've done over this window of time that's had two basic recession, recessionary time in there. And also just to remind, you know, for the public and everyone here about our, you know, we are AAA rated, it's the highest you could be rated by two of the rating, two of the rating agencies, and that affords us the opportunity to have very low interest rates when we issued in the past, and as we continue to think about a potential in future, that advantage of being AAA. And a lot of that is because, you know, we have diverse revenues, we do have a large tax digest and a tax base, and it's, and we have a diverse taxpayers as well, all of our, we don't have one significant taxpayer that pays all of our property taxes and if something were to happen. So there's just a lot of things that are good for us and that we've been able to do to keep our economy and our, everything about Alpharetta's finances in good intact. And they also, you know, our budget process and what we're doing today and what we'll adopt this year is viewed by the, by the agencies as a very good method and how we do it with conservative revenues and et cetera. And we also have very good reserves, you know, that we've been able to maintain and intact. So again, I just wanted to use that as a slide before I jump into the actual 2026 budget, which, like, real quick, I'll do slide 15 just to show what it is in total. This is the total budget of 162 million versus, as I mentioned, last year was actually a little higher, and not so much if you probably dove into the operations, but mainly on the capital side because of carry forward fund balance the years before, having a little bit more significant, a little bit higher numbers that you rolled into the budget. And occasionally, when you are appropriating all the, all the TSPAS II projects, for example, then we'll recognize all that revenue in one year, even though it may take two years to get there. So sometimes timing out the budget and saying why we're up or down can, can be difficult just at the high level. But you see the makeups there of the special revenue funds, the capital project funds, debt service funds, et cetera. I probably should just bring that up on the debt service fund. We talked about it last week, you see 6.6 million. That's roughly, goes up towards seven a little bit, back down to 6.6 over the next 25 years or 23 years. It's, it's a level debt because all the bonds have been wrapped around each other. So then we'll just jump over to the general fund itself, and we've talked about this, there's not much even from a retreat standpoint that, that we didn't discuss from a revenue standpoint that, and we dove into a little bit of the issues with the residential and the homestead, floating homestead, floating homestead exemption that caps the growth to the greater of, lesser of CPI or 3%. And so we're only expecting about a 4% on the residential side of the equation and then a 1% contraction on the, on the commercial side. So that is going to generate a 2.7% increase in our current property taxes and give us $895,000 towards the budget. Come all the way down to the bottom line, we can go over any ones in details, but most of them are flat, not doing well, there's occasional pickups with franchise fees and electricity and insurance premium taxes. But at the end, we're up about two, just under 2% in total revenue growth there. The next line down below there, I just want to make, that's the carry forward of the fund balance. The year before '25, we were bringing for '23's fiscal year-end surplus position above the emergency reserves that we keep to make sure we have good adequate reserves. We bring that excess over, we bring it into the, it's the general fund, so we bring it into the general fund as a source of revenue, and we turn right around and transfer it over to do capital. So that's one source of the capital funding is carry forward fund balance. So this year, it's only $5 million, just shortly over $5 million. On the expenditure side, on slide 18, again, usually the biggest growth a lot of times is in the personnel services, and I think we've been able to do pretty well on the health insurance side and everything else to keep that intact, given that we are proposing a 3% on average pay increase for our employees. After that, there's just some things that we talked about as far as how potential runoff election and some issues related to the tightening of the budget of the E911 fund, where the dollar 50 is not supporting enough of the overall structure and necessities of running a 911 center. And so some of those costs have now been moved over to the general fund and also, to some extent, to be fair with how we do it, with how Milton does theirs as well, to make sure we're charging the right amount, removing some of that over. So outside of those type expenditures, it's pretty much a base budget from a, from a maintenance and operations standpoint. You can see there for the base budget, first line under maintenance and operations is only up 1.2%. And we, and we did do some reduction in discretionary spending, travel training, just with all the uncertainty of, of the budget going into next year and as well as the tightness that we see right now. So we did remove some of that, just targeted, but nothing, nothing that large. So at the end of the day, you see down below, the, we're going to transfer over the $5,017 over to capital. That's the fund, so the source of that was on the revenue side was the carry forward fund balance. The budget itself is transferring 2.262 million to capital out of all the taxes, covering all the expenses, end of the day, we can put 2.262 million. Last year, it was 4 million. If you go to slide, so at the end of the, did I, yeah, there's no surplus. So before I go there, if you, on slide 18, you'll see the balance is budgeted at 100 million 943 if you compare the slides 17 to 18. There's a line item called operating initiative, reserve for operating initiative. So that's basically the preliminary surplus of the budget. Those revenues I was talking about and the expenses as they're predicted, there's about 214,000 for new initiatives. And that way we operate, as you all know, our budget is, we try to build a base budget, working with departments and looking at their cuts and what we want to do, or we're looking at things they need a little bit more money, but not adding to the budget from a structure or anything, just the base budget. And then if they have new needs or new desires, or we have things we want to get into, then those are operating initiatives, and they'll be funded out of that 214,500 unless we see something wrong with the structure itself. But, so, so I'm going to turn now to the operating initiatives themselves that we're, we're proposing in this budget. So available's 214,500, and down you'll see what are the recommended initiatives that are included right now in the budget. And then that's followed by a bunch of operating initiatives that were not recommended at this time, which are on these slides, are also in the book. But the 214,500, on, this is a little unusual this year, but if, if we've been talking for a long time, and an item tonight is on for the second reading of the potential of adjusting our occupation tax, which hasn't been adjusted in 20 years, and try to, you know, compete with the surrounding cities around us, if we make those adjustments, then we would have $850,000 to amend this budget for as, as operating initiative revenues. Way we show it here is that dollar for dollar would go back into the capital contribution lines of that 2.2 million that used to be 4 million the year before, so that we would have closer to 3 million of that number in that. And then the other remaining initiatives from economic development, from public safety, one officer, I mean, one firefighter, and in rec for tree lighting, additional dollars to augment what they're currently spending. So that is the, that's the approach on the operating initiatives, and I'll just real quick go over the capital structure, capital initiatives on slide 24. On slide 24, you'll see what we try to do is put all the, sort of the capital project funds or the different sources of funds that pay for your capital across the top. We talk about how much money they currently have in their available fund balance, sort of their unallocated dollars that are in those particular funds. And then you start seeing the general fund's going to make 362,000 to one fund and another 1.9 to Stormwater, and that comes over to 2,262. That's the 2,262 that we showed in the high level, that the general fund is paying 2,262 towards capital. It's just, we split it into the funds where we respectively believe they're going to, where we need the dollars. And then you'll see the next line is the 5,017,048. That's the carry forward of the fund balance going into the capital project fund. So when this is all said and done, you, you have, really, you have $20 million when you don't take these other sources into play, and then you have available unallocated down at the bottom section you see there. Now, we do have some other grants and sources that we show. For example, one that's come up quite a bit is if we do move forward with some fire trucks, we would be taking a capital lease, not your operating lease, you own it at the end, so you are taking a financing out. So that is a source of revenue. We have to show the revenue and expenditure in governmental funds and the governmental accounting, so you have an offset, so there's no, it's not using current fund balance or any of this year's tax structure to fund those purchases of those fire trucks. It would be a lease. When it would start having an impact is year two in '27, when you start paying the lease on that. And then the old leases will fall off that year or some years thereafter. We are, we are sort of doubling up a little bit because of the timeframe that is requiring us right now to order these trucks or get these trucks. That item will come back before you as council, won't be approved until it's back before you as far as reasonableness of the loan, the lease, and the purchase. So it's just in here to show that that was on our five-year CIP, because we have all these things earmarked out, all these leases of those kind of apparatus are in our CIP. We do try to follow the schedule as far as the life of the asset, how long they can last. We are extending, if we do, if we do a ladder out to 13 years, I think it's a ladder 13, and it's 11 now we're doing for, for that, but for fire pumpers. So that's the capital plan, as seen, and you can see the departments and their sources and where all those dollars go. And then the next slides, just write that up, they give the page number if you have a question, because the actual document itself, the budget document will describe those capital items. So that's all I have, other than I think the last slide on here would be the calendar. Slide 35, I think. And that's the dates will be back in front of you on the first public hearings on June 16th and June 23rd. So that's it for me. Departments are here to answer any of the tough, detailed questions.
Do we have any questions for Director Harris at this time? Councilman Brady?
Okay, here's got some tough ones coming for you. First of all, you started off with something really important, I think it really takes a minute just to talk about, just for, for everyone kind of listening. First of all, you talked about the credit rating of the city, which is AAA, with Standard and Poor's and from Moody's, and this year, this, this budget cycle will capture kind of a, a big date there that, see, Alpharetta went from a double A-plus rating to a triple A rating in 2006. And that was, this budget cycle will take us 20 years from actually having that. So it's significant when you look at the sound fiscal policy and the prudent fiscal management it takes to kind of do that, that 20 years is a long piece to have that in place. And because of that, if you look back, just with some comments on that, remember in 20, in 20, was it 2008 and 2009, the Great Recession kind of hit, there was only two cities in the city of Georgia that had that quality rating of AAA. And then shortly after that, we were able to issue significant bonds at 2.83%, and even ones after that at 3.13% that had significant savings to the taxpayers because of that sound fiscal policy. And those are things we kind of forget in the day-to-day, but they are significant of what we're able to do. To take that even a little bit further and you kind of zoom out a little bit, that credit rating only exists in four counties in the state of Georgia. 159 counties, well, now it's five because Hall County just got added to it. So five counties in the state of Georgia had that credit rating to be by Moody's and Standard and Poor's. So I think it's pretty significant. So, so with that, I'd like to thank you very much for, for everything you've done to keep that sound fiscal policy in place. But from, from a macro kind of discussion, when we talk kind of about revenue and expenses as related to save business, you know, and every, everyone's got some headwinds and, you know, everyone has some challenges, just like every organization does. Can you just take a second to kind of talk about, you know, what's revenue? Because I hear all the time, well, we got all this new development, you know, we're great, you know, all this new development's driving a significant amount of revenue. But like everything else, it, it exists where there's some headwinds in certain areas that, you know, for our tax collections and property tax, and then ultimately, you know, what levers we have to push with it. So just wanted to kind of touch on that as more of a, instead of a granular piece, more just general macro.
Correct. And generally, you know, in local government, we're 70% personnel are in that range, and when you have that from the general fund perspective, and it's pretty universal throughout any city, they may shift some things over to an enterprise fund and do stuff, but generally about 70% in the general fund. And when you look at the impacts of everything, when you're trying to give salary ranges in the last few years, they were 4%, 5%, they were 8%. We had quite a few dollars amount that we spent trying to keep up with what was going on in the market. And so at, at the end of the day, you know, you probably need revenues to grow at least 4% almost across the board, you know, three to four, you'd love four. And, and the big winner that years ago used to be to some extent our, our digest, because the digest could grow up by that, the growth. What you hope though, a little bit, is that the growth would pay for an expansion of services, for getting new facility, I mean, new businesses on the tax roll and, and things, then you have more demands on, on the public. And so, but it, but it doesn't always work exactly like that. We don't earmark that, set that aside, but what you're seeing now because of, what I think we're seeing now because of, of the floating homestead exemption, and, and we're a good portion residential, that that can only grow by 3% or CPI, and I think it's slightly less this year than 3%. So it will cap us, and then you're only going to get it if there's sales. Now, we talked about it this last meeting, the sales I think are also going to slow down to some extent because if somebody is paying very low taxes now moves, they're going to pay higher taxes because they're getting that grease of all that floating homestead exemption against their property. So we, we can't say that we've seen that right now, but at the end of the day, that will limit those revenues. So if, if the property taxes do not themselves get near 4%, since property taxes represents 30% of the, of the, of the, of the revenues of the general fund and falls under that, and, and in our case, it has because the commercial side, which can come up and down, and it's great in the years it does well, but when it's flat, then it's not generating anything. And that's partly what's happening now, is that's not generating. And then the other lines, hotel motel tax, no growth. We're barely beating 2019 numbers pre-COVID when we had 23 hotels versus 30 hotels now. So it's, more hotels is pretty, but it's not necessary. It's good, it's a good economy, but the people have changed how they travel and what they do, and I think we'll see an uptick down the road, but right now, we're not seeing. And then on local option sales tax, despite our great efforts by those higher than me at trying to negotiate with the county, they are grabbing a bigger piece of the local option sales tax, and the cities are all sharing in that. So that growth has to grow, and then we have, the rate itself, the way we said, is slowly dropping so that they can move up and get their 15% that, 15% that they agree to that they're under now, but it will drive to 15% over the next 10 years. So that, that's another significant revenue that just is not generating enough right now in these last two-year budgets to keep up. And then the new construction comes on and sort of needs to, where we'd like it to maybe expand services, it's using, it's being used to basically stay balanced with the base budget, any of the new construction. And, and as you know, values only go on 40% of what some building is, and I think we've ran some numbers on two hotels that are, that are on our books for longer, good sizable 300-room hotels, and their current values, they generate 120,000 a year, so they're going to, you know, they're going to pay for an officer. That's it, two, two giant buildings like that pay one officer, you know. So it's not usually as big as some people see those, that construction, you think it's turning into a major increase. It's, it's, it's a little bit tougher than that, but all things are, in a big macro, good, faced like anybody else, faced with salary increases last few years, what was going on in law enforcement, everything else I think was part of that. We faced it, we balanced it, we got people to market, and, and we've done other good things, it's just, we just got to ride out the commercial values being down and a few other things and try to keep, hopefully inflation doesn't hit us again, because we just sort of have that buried in here as well, so.
I'd like to also thank you for your, you know, and the council for some of the adjustments they're putting into the budget in there. Sometimes complacency in financial management can be, you know, it's easy not to do anything, but the problem is you'll run into a difficult place going forward, us being reactive or proactive, and I think us being reactive, pulling the levers we can, make some minor adjustments today will put us in better position tomorrow, that we're not faced with something larger or bigger in the future that has more of a, you know, a negative adverse reaction with the taxpayers. So I just want to thank you for those adjustments. It means a lot together.
Thank you. Councilman Hines?
Good evening, Director Harris. Want to talk during this workshop a little bit about budget process and a few substantive items, and I want to start with telling you here publicly how appreciative I am for this five-year capital improvement plan that's in the budget as Appendix A. I went back through the budgets historically, and I see where we started the detail list in, in 2024, and this is by far the most detailed list yet, so I see the CIP improving. And I just want to, you know, commend the directors, Mr. Lagerblum, yourself, because in the past, I would read this data in our budgets and, and sort of budget in a vacuum. And with the CIP, it gives me an opportunity to see what the expectations are over the next five years, and that really helps with prioritizing any budget request in any one year, and whether we're playing catch-up or whether, you know, it's ongoing. So wanted to start, start with that and just encourage even more thought and detail in future years CIPs, because I find it extraordinarily helpful as I'm going through it. With that in mind, I'm looking at the CIP, I'm on page 287 of the budget, and this is the CIP for this budget year. And in particular, I'm looking at what the projected fund balance will be from, for this year. this year and the four subsequent years. Are those conservative figures? Are those, you know, how do you feel about the accuracy of those fund balances? And actually, the annual appropriations, how, to what degree is that science and to what degree is that art?
Probably a little more art than science. Because when you're projecting out fund balance, you're saying, I know what the budget is, and then I know we won't spend all of it, or I think we won't spend all of it, and that's creating that fund balance. So, but the reality is, you almost got to look at it to some extent together. Can our operating budget itself generate 7.7, 7.2 million? We know it can this year because it's got the prior money plus our current one. And then it goes to 7.4. And then we do hope that we start seeing ourself, I think to some extent what's built in here is, we were very conservative years ago. We lost some of that conservative edge coming out of the recession. We had, we were very conservative during the recession to the point where, you know, we had a lot of revenues come in well above what the estimates were, because it just didn't hit us that bad in some of these line items in the, after the COVID, I'm sorry, I'm sure I said COVID or not. And then, but the last few years, given what we had before us at trying to get the, primarily the personnel cost in and just address those issues, I think we got pretty tight along with an economy that was getting tight. And so our hope is, or what we're building in there a little bit, is that we'll be building up slowly some conservative numbers and therefore the fund balance carry forward will get back up to a reasonable, reasonable number again, starting in 28.
So I'm going to ask a couple of questions, a few questions on substantive requests here and then tie it back to the CIP, and I'll try to make it as easy as possible. But the first one has to do with the fleet replacement that's in the budget for capital. It's on page 207, 1.6 billion dollars. By way of context, in the CIP, for the five-year projection counting this budget, we've got over $10 million of fleet replacement on the CIP over the next five years. In terms of process, be it in this budget or in next year's budget, are we tied to seven years or 100,000 miles for public safety vehicles? I think all other vehicles are 10 years or 130,000 miles. Can we explore other options rather than just a blanket, when a vehicle hits seven years, it's time to change that vehicle out regardless of whether it's in great condition or not?
We certainly have over the years. It used to be a static number, 100, you know, 125,000 miles. What we were doing then is that occasionally we would have to buy 30 cars and then the next year, 17 vehicles, because you're letting prior inventory of assets with miles on it dictate your funding. And you may not have had that capital dollars, you know. And then it competes that year when you got to get six more cars. So we did, as we finally said, we look at it, you know, if you got, if you're putting 15,000 miles on these cars every year, you're at 100,000 in seven years. It's probably going to take you seven and a half to, during that fiscal year, get it replaced. So you're well over 100. You're probably closer to 120,000 in theory on those police cars. And so what we said is, we just think the approach is not a static seven years. It's trying to give a dollar amount that would fund 1/7 of the fleet to the public safety, who then has the analytics, and as Chris has mentioned and wants me to make sure I mention, is their software now, and so they can look at what, you know, how much maintenance this vehicle's had or not had. And hey, look, I'm only getting seven, I'm only getting 25 cars next year, or whatever that 1/7 is. So this one just can't get done. You may need to move it over to somebody who doesn't drive it much. You may need to do the admin car. So some of those may go eight, nine years. But we think we have a better approach under that, but it certainly can still be looked at as far as can you get eight now? Or lack of a better words, is there a little more mileage you can get and life out of these assets? And then I think parks and that, you know, they don't drive it that often, they don't drive that many miles. So usually the miles are low and eventually it gets old and it becomes an issue. So it's usually sort of a static number in their regards. But again, we will have data, we'll know better. And if we can extend those dates, we certainly will. We talk about it quite often.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not wanting any of our employees to drive around something that's either unbecoming or unsafe. But at the same time, you know, if we can make just a 10% ding on a $10 million five-year budget item, that's, as they say, you know, starting to be real money in terms of making the dollar go a little further on just fleet replacement. And that's just public safety. I'm not even addressing the fleet replacement we do for all the other departments. On page 209, we've got the DC fast chargers for electric vehicles. It's a $260,000 item. I think it's something I basically am supportive of, but do we have an offsetting figure from the 260 as of what we can expect in revenue for a net impact on the budget?
In this first year, we do not have an offset.
And just to be clear, this is something where
The public.
The public can use a credit card to charge, fast charge their vehicle, correct?
Yes.
In addition to public safety.
There have been some numbers shared between public safety, us, and admin on that ROI.
And what I don't know is, are we looking at a potential of, you know, $25,000, $10,000? I mean, I don't know what the offset might be, whether it's appreciable or?
Well, 260 divided by four, that's the answer. Yeah. I can't think right now because I'm doing too many things. But in four years, the, our understanding, we're with public safety, some of the numbers we've seen, we should be able to see the recovery
Right.
Of that.
And that actually would reduce the net cost?
Yes, it just won't, you got to come out of pocket for it now. And we'll have to think about how, how do we use that source to be prepared to replace it or whatever we're going to do in that arena with electric vehicles.
Mr. Lagerblum, do you have any further details in the negotiations you have with Georgia Power?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that have to happen, is we have to decide to move forward with this. And once we decide to move forward with it, then we will engage Georgia Power to install the power that's sufficient to have the chargers work. All of the case studies that I've reviewed regarding these Tesla chargers here and around the nation have a much faster than four-year ROI. And we're literally seeing ROIs in that 18 to 20-month range. I don't want to guess at a revenue number, but you used the word appreciable, and I think it will, the revenue opportunity from this location at the Public Safety Building has, you mentioned, real money. I would say that there's real money in this over the 10-year lifecycle of the warranty of these chargers. So if we hit that ROI in, if we hit the investment value at 18 to 20 months, we're seeing revenues then outpace up until year 10.
And would we book that as an offset against capital expense, or would it just be part of operating revenue?
Operating revenue.
It would be operating revenue.
Have another question. This may be for either of you or Chief Robinson. The Pharaoh scanner, I was going through that item. It's on page 211, it's $75,500. You know, with some of the things that we're confronting within the budget, some things where we may want to keep our powder dry coming up until mid-year out reallocations, I was wondering, is this a want or a need? I see how it reads that it benefits prosecutors and non-Alpharetta folks, but can you elaborate on how it benefits the?
Sure. So it, I would definitely describe it as a need, and I do understand the difference, and that is important distinction. It helps prosecution only in that it's make sure that we are solidifying our cases. And so it's a investigative tool that can be used, number one, by our investigators regarding any kind of crime scene. Right now, currently with CID as well as traffic, even arson investigations, anytime we need this kind of technology, we have to borrow it from Roswell. We have to call Roswell. And for years, they've, they've been very gracious to us. We appreciate their partnership, but they have come. And so when we've had a major crime scene, major accident scene or major arson scene, we've been borrowing that because it is such a valuable tool for us regarding being able to accurately detail a crime scene, an accident scene, an arson scene, which is very important in the prosecution, as you can appreciate, and making sure that we have all our ducks in a row and we don't have any loopholes in our investigation that could create possibly a problem in trying to prosecute a criminal case.
To the extent it benefits, we're in Fulton County, and it benefits Fulton County DA's office or whatever the case may be, Solicitor's Office. Is there opportunities for them to, I don't suppose they have any extra money sitting around?
I would say no. And again, and maybe, maybe we could have written that a little bit differently. I mean, it benefits them and prosecution because we're bringing them a solid case.
Correct.
This is a tool, a major tool, would be a major tool in our toolbox to ensure that we're doing our work as investigators, the crash investigator, detective, arson investigator to take to them. But no, there would, no opportunity that I'm aware of for Fulton County to help in that process.
And in terms of evaluating this item going forward now, or maybe as a mid-year adjustment or whatever the case may be, this, when we act on this, it will carry an annual, an annual
Do you remember what the annual is?
It says in the notes, $4,000 to $6,000 annually for a software license
Correct.
On top of the implementation.
Correct.
So how do we do our job without this?
Well, like I said, right now, especially a major scene, we call Roswell. And they let us borrow theirs. They have to send a detective out or investigator out and utilize it. But we, literally the last several years, we have, we've been using Roswell, and they've been very gracious to help us do that, so.
And this is for all accident scenes?
Not all, no, no. Any major accident scene with major injuries or any, typically what I would say, any crash investigation where we have to call out our crash investigation team, which would be major injuries and/or fatalities. Again, very important that we get all the aspects of the investigation correct, down to the inch and the distance and things like that. And so when we have that, we have always called on Roswell. And I would say back four or five years at least where they've been gracious to come out and let us use theirs.
Thank you.
Councilman Brady?
Oh, I was just thanking him, but I'm fine, go ahead.
My apologies.
No, no, no.
Councilman Hypes.
Well, yeah, let me finish up a couple of others. Thank you, Councilman Brady. On page 220, we have a line item for parking garage maintenance, $50,000. And when I look at the CIP, and that's just for maintenance of our two garages, correct?
Correct.
And is that maintenance generally, or is that just specific to one item? I mean, we have elevators, we have, you know, cleaning things up, we have electrical.
It's multitude of things.
In the CIP, I see that we are planning on $50,000 per year for the two parking garages each year. Total of 50,000 per year. Actually, in 2028, we got 125,000. So we got 225, 325,000 for parking garage maintenance is what's anticipated, based on the CIP.
Yes, yes, yes. But in the past, as we do sometimes, as we get with Pete, and we say, okay, you have that earmarked as 50 every year, but now you're sitting on a balance. And we'll come into that year and say, we're not going to put 50 towards it, we're going to put 20, 15, because you still have some balance left over. That's one advantage of having it in a capital line item as opposed to operating. It would just be lost and dropped to the bottom line.
If you don't mind speaking up.
I'm sorry, yeah, I just stepped away.
And this is just going to be a capital expenditure every year for those parking garages?
Correct, is our anticipation. But as I said, maybe here is to some extent, if there are balances in the account, then we may not, and we're not quite spending that much, and we are maintaining the garage, we would cut back that two years from now where you anticipate 50, you may only spend 20.
And my final question on substance is, on page 223, there is a replacement, 223, a replacement for a generator at $100,000. Has anybody looked in to see if a natural gas commercial generator? Because I Google searched it, and I, like, the highest priced ones, I'm finding is like 45,000, those were the high-priced ones.
I'll let Pete.
And maybe there's something about if a government buys a commercial-grade natural gas generator that they have to cost more?
So yeah, so the actual generator itself, and then it's the actual delivery, it's the placement, if it's a bigger generator, it's the concrete pad on top of it, but we are all at natural gas. We don't have any more diesel.
I understand. Have these been, have these been bid out, or where does the 100,000 come from? Because I just did a quick search and I wasn't finding anything close to $100,000. And these are for like 70, you know, gigawatts or whatever they are.
So what we do is we work with our generator maintenance vendor, and they put together the bid, the package for us and specifications for the particular unit. And it's an all-in price. And then we anticipate, and I don't know what year we're looking at, 20, is it this fiscal year?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've got a quote from our vendor for our maintenance, sitting right around $100,000. So it's delivery, installation, all the components, tying to the natural gas, everything, the utilities.
And it's replacing one that needs to be replaced?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilman Brady?
Yeah, I was going to take advantage of the chief being up here, if you don't mind just, and I want to kind of go back because Councilman Hypes kind of brought up a good line item, talking about our fleet replacement of $4 million. I think we got it in the budget. Tell us a little bit why, more detail behind that. Because the $4 million, remember, goes to two pumper, so it's the fire equipment, right? Two pumper and one ladder, right? The two pumper's are 2.3 and the ladder's 2.4 million. You tell us a little bit about that procurement process.
And by the way, that's the lease, the fleet replacement number was 1.6, the lease number's for the four, for the fire equipment.
Yep. And honestly, I hate to put it back on Mr. Harris, but he's more the expert.
Just the sensitivity on the procurement.
Those assets will cost $4 million to buy. We are buying them, but we're taking out a lien, I mean, a lease or loan, whatever you want to call it, it's a lease, it's a capital lease to do. And that's how we do all of our long-term assets like this, so that you can start making lease payments. So we will spend what the bank gives us, and then we will pay the bank. So in governmental accounting, we have to recognize that 4 million, we didn't need to do it today, we could do it when it comes later, but the budget would have had to be amended because when we pay that bill for those two engines and one pumper, two, I'm sorry, two engines and one ladder, it will be $4 million. And you're going to cut a check, but you've got loan proceeds that paid that check. Then we're going to start the lease payments of, take that number and divide it by 10, it's $400,000 in lease payments every year to actually pay. That is going to come out of our general fund, fund dollars is 400,000 out of the general fund next year. We're probably already paying, if this timed out right, it doesn't always time out right, an old lease has fallen away, or those three leases fallen away at 350,000 or 300,000. You're paying for the differential of a more expensive truck 10 years later. So this is a CIP plan, it's been around since I got here in the 20s, I think the first one I got here, I did a fire truck, said, we can't pay for these things out of, can't pay for them out of your general fund cash. You can't save up enough to come up with 800, back in those days, 800,000 for a truck and for an engine. So you need to lease these things. We don't lease our regular vehicles, they are purchase 25 of them and move on and you own them. These we lease, but not in operating. It's not like your home, you don't turn it back in and through, you can own it, you have it, you paid that 10-year, you don't have to make another lease, you don't have to remove that asset, you can keep that asset. The reason we like to roll into another one is because once you, in the general fund, we work in the world in government, once I don't have that annual appropriation to pay a lease payment, it could go anywhere in the general fund. It can be consumed somewhere else, and now you got to come up with that 400,000. So hopefully that makes sense, at least as far as how the structure.
I think I was more detailed towards the procurement process of those assets, like, why don't we wait another couple of years? Okay, why don't we just? why don't we wait another couple of years? Okay, why don't we just extend this out a couple of years? I'm trying to go to when we need to go buy it, when we receive that asset. And if we extend the life of that asset, right, and out there, because it's a sensitive piece of equipment, we have to have that for life safety. If we let another two years goes by and something happens to that truck and we go to order a replacement, how long does it take to get that replacement?
Takes, I think, the turn, the time now is coming near four years-
Or more.
-to place your order and get it. So, that's what part of this issue is, is timing that. If we wait another year, like, right now, I believe, they believe the trucks, the, the ladder and, or the pumper's are 11 years, and then the ladder's 13, is what I'm hearing. So, in year nine would be a perfect, you know, to get that, you have to order it in year nine, but you're probably still paying a year, a 10-year lease on the last one. So, we aren't having that debate, and we're going to have that debate when we come back to council with it. But for right now, we just, we're earmarking that we want to put on notice that we probably are, mainly because it was in our CIP. So, we are, you know, we had it in, in the plan, so we brought it forward, is why it's in this budget. But it won't get appropriated or done. A project won't get moved forward, the procurement won't move forward until we get in front of council. And then, you know, fleet will get, Pierce is their engine of choice, and then they'll give us the quotes and the bids, what that is, and then we'll go get financing.
Since COVID, it's been four, if not five years, and it's, so it's created a major issue for our departments across the country regarding this, this very topic.
Now, this is a work session. I didn't mention that earlier. So, we're not going to be taking a vote on this item. This is simply so staff and leadership can hear the points of view of council, so they'll know what to bring forward with the original, I mean, for the final budget recommendation. Is there anyone else on council that has a question or a comment at this point? Councilman Dorito?
Yeah, just one question, Director Harris. One of the things we, we really, rarely talk about is appropriations made in the fiscal year 25 budget, which ends the end of next month, or this month.
This month.
Has there been any, like, what I'll say, surpluses in any line items in last year's appropriated monies across the board that have not been spent, or the departments didn't require as much of what they requested in last year's budget? Or, or have those monies been reallocated for other uses? Or, I'm just curious, how do we know what, what we appropriated last year's budget and approved versus what was invested and spent? And if there was overages, were they reallocated elsewhere?
Yeah. In our, in our monthly report, and even if we didn't produce a monthly report to you all that we do in the public, we're always big on how much have we spent to date compared to last year, and also on the revenue side. What are we collecting? Where are we? How does this compare trend-wise? And, and same with on the expenditure side. So, both items, revenues, we hope will be greater than what we budgeted. And that will, we won't reallocate it unless we came to you for a mid-year item. It won't be reallocated, those additional revenues. They just, hopefully, will build in, they'll drop to the bottom line. We'll have an audit done. The audit will say there's how much money on the revenue side. Same with the expenditure. Departments right now are pretty close and tight, but most, the size of Public Safety, we could easily, I'd have to look at the numbers if I haven't, but could easily be a million or so that would drop to the bottom line. We sort of know that, but we don't bring that into the budget now. We wait for the audit to be done. And that becomes the funding source that we talked about at the beginning of the available fund balance to put towards capital, once we shore up our emergency reserve. So, the emergency reserve is 25% of our budget, so that if something, you completely lost everything, you'd be able to handle 25% of the, of the budget for a couple, so you have four, we have a fourth of the year that you need to cover with that money if you had no other source of revenues. And that's standard for most cities throughout, and that helps us get on AAA rate. The amount above that, then we bring into, in that. And because the budget changes every year, the reserve will be slightly going up every year. So, it's going to peel from some of that excess as well.
Yeah. I understand that, what you just outlined for the public, but maybe what I want some clarity on is, if there's a, let's say, a $50,000 line item we approved in last year for training for some department, and, yeah, we get the monthly reports from you and it shows, you know, how we're trending, all that stuff in each of the line items. But what we don't get, unless we get into the nitty-gritty details, I guess, which we don't-
Yes.
-is if there's a $50,000 training budget line item, as an example, and let's say the department only utilizes 25,000 of that training, for training dollars, but uses the other 25 for something else, is there something that we could see that monies have been reallocated for other uses that we appropriated for a specific-
Yes, because any of those adjustments would have been done through some budget amendment internally, because they can move dollars. But back to, when we build the base year budget, we don't just let the departments build their base year budget. We have the personnel in Sean's office that goes through the detail, what did they spend it on, what didn't they, and get the line item right. And also, if you don't need that much money, it's already been removed. We remove it out of their target budget into next year. So, yes, I was answering, past dollars drops to fund balance. But next year's budget reflects what our staff, meeting with their staffs internally, believe. You may not need that much money. You haven't spent that much in the past. Not that we want you to just run out and go spend it, but you don't need that much in that line item. And we'll work with you if you disagree. And so, that is flushed out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from council have any questions or comment? So, Director Harrison, I had mentioned, I think, most of these, if not, there's just a few things, because it is such a tight budget. As I was going back through and looking through some of them, but I just wanted to raise to council's attention to see if there's any thoughts about this. I know in the first workshop we had, there was support from members of council, some members, I don't remember who or how many, for increasing our annual spend on the Christmas tree lighting of 50,000. I think that was recommended in the budget as we see tonight.
In the operating initiatives, yes.
Yes. And I would say that my recommendation is, in a tight budget cycle, that's probably not the best value. I, I saw a couple of other items that were requested from departments that were at that same $50,000 number, like street light repairs and things like that. And I would encourage our council to say, you know, maybe give some flexibility to put a priority on those actual needs that we were talking about earlier, for that $50,000 for the Christmas tree lighting. And then hopefully, we'll be able to celebrate more a happier budget cycle. But that is an ongoing commitment, because if we do it once, we're not going to step back. People will expect it. So, that's one. The other was, I had noticed that, and I don't remember the page number off the top of my head, but Pete may remember, Pete Sasevich, I had mentioned it to him as well, from Public Works. There's a one line item that was recommended. It's $250,000 to help prepare for a potential T-Sploß renewal, which would include some types of designs and graphics and things like that. Because that sales tax that is providing all the infrastructure improvements on our local roads here and our sidewalks and things, and the Alpha Loop as well, is, will be up for renewal in a year and a half, I believe it is, Pete, that-
Next November.
Next November. So, yeah, about a year and a half from now. And so, while I, we certainly need to do this and we need to do it well, I, I think we can probably get away with less than 250,000. Because we're not talking about engineering designs, because we don't have any revenues for it. We don't even know its past. But I think we need to come up with a more thrifty or efficient way of coming up with something to help educate the public and people that would have to be voting on this, that, that we could probably use that money somewhere else this cycle, at least a portion of it. So, I just encourage our department heads, Councilman Rico, Dorito, and Councilman Brady, perhaps, see how we can work with our leadership team to maybe remove some of that around to something that might be better. The other one is just a point I want to make to people, because, you know, this last legislative cycle, there was a tremendous effort in the State House to discontinue the school zone cameras, the traffic tickets. And I remember when they first were implemented a few years ago, and we started getting a lot of angry calls and, you know, people that got tickets and things like that. And we've, we, as an organization, were always very clear, whenever somebody complained or called me about it, said, "Look, we're just trying to make it safe in these school districts. Revenue is not the driving factor." And a lot of people were skeptical, and there's certainly been municipalities around the state of Georgia that have abused those rules and laws and applied it illegally to do so. But I just noticed, as you're going through the budget here, I look and I see that this year, the school zone citations, the revenues have gone down just since last year-
Correct.
-over $225,000. And it's dramatically dropped every year, which we knew. The company that came to Alpharetta and installed those cameras told us, after people get the second or third ticket, they typically stop speeding through those school zones. And that's always been our intention. And so, there's evidence. We have annual reports that you can see that. But when you look at this, there's, outside of just the $225,000 drop in the school zone tickets this past annual budget, we also have $100,000 fewer just fines in the court, the local court. So, we're not doing that for revenue. If we were, these numbers wouldn't be going down. And I just thought I'd point that out, because I appreciate all of our law enforcement and our court employees who are just trying to help enforce the laws and keep people safe. And I think this is a demonstration of that, because nobody here is complaining that we're not writing enough tickets. So, I just thought I'd point that out, because it's easily overlooked in a $162 million budget. Other than that, I just want to congratulate Mr. Lagerboom and your staff and all of our council members that have participated in this. I think it's been a good pro, it's a tough year, tougher than some, but I think you've done a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, like I said, we're not voting on that tonight. That was just for your information as we go into the cycle where we will be budget, doing the budget votes. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda consists of several items. The first is the city council meeting minutes for the meeting from May 19th, 2025, the permanent Alpha Loop easement agreement, civic space and public access easement agreement, and First Amendment to Private Development Agreement, Lakeview Development, and the appointment of a special counsel. Is there anyone on council that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comments on the consent agenda?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on the consent agenda, now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, may I move to approve the consent agenda, as I want.
I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, second by Mayor Proton Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And the first item in public hearing is the ordinance for the City Code text amendments, occupational licenses, taxes, and regulations. This is the second reading. First reading of this item occurred during the May 19th, 2025 city council meeting. And Ms. S. Wine, our city attorney, will read the ordinance and present the public comment.
An ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to amend Chapter 28, occupational licenses, taxes, and regulations, Article 2 of Chapter 42, insurer license fees, and Article 3 of Chapter 42, occupation tax of the code of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to provide for effective dates to repeal all ordinances in conflict herewith and for other purposes. And mayor and council, there have been no changes since the first reading and public hearing of this matter, but I, and I'm sure Director Harris, would be happy to answer any questions should you have them.
Do we have any questions for Director Harris? Thank you, Ms. S. Wine. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Either in favor or in opposition?
No, sir, no comment cards at all.
Okay. However, if there's anyone who would like to come forward at this time, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment on that item. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the City Code text amendments for the occupational licenses, taxes, and regulations, for consideration of proposing the modifications to increase the annual license fee levied by each insurer during the business within the city, to increase the occupational tax levied upon certain businesses and practitioners of professions and occupations, to amend business registration requirements, to provide reinforcements, and penalties for violations, and to repeal conflicting ordinance.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Brady and a second by Councilman Hype. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously as well. So, that will wrap up the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And we'll move on to the new business portion of tonight's meeting. First item under new business is the purchase approval for Public Works fleet replacement, Chevrolet Silverado service truck. Director Sasevich, you have the floor.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Tonight before you is a new vehicle for Public Works. It's a replacement vehicle as part of the FY '25 capital budget. Looking at getting a Chevrolet Silverado 350 that is on-site, so it's ready to come through the state contract, no time to wait for delivery and all that. We could go by and pick it up.
Do we have any questions for Director Sasevich? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro?
We have no public comment cards on this item.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak about the Silverado acquisition, now is your chance to see. I see no one come forward, so I'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, may I move to approve the purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 crew cab four-by-tube, reading service truck utilizing state contract 99999-001-SPD-0000155 from Hardy Chevrolet. The amount not to exceed $80,268. Authorized demand execute all necessary documents.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Dorito and a second by Councilman Brady. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously as well.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, Pete. Next and last item under new business is the request for proposals 25-114, financial auditing services for the city of Alpharetta. Director Harris, once again, you're a busy man.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you is consideration to approve an award to enter into contract in response to RFP 25114 to Malden and Jenkins for financial auditing services. Auditing services are one of the professional services that you always want to do through an RFP process, not the lowest bid process. In fact, I think state of Florida actually has a law on the, on that subject, that it has to be something other than just price. So, in this case, again, normal RFP process, and three firms were looked at. And Malden and Jenkins clearly outscored the others and was second as far as price, but I think there was only a $5,000 differential for each year. So, they have been our auditor for a good number of years. They do change partners and, on our engagement. And I was not on the committee, so just removed myself from that, but there was a committee. And, and so, before use that consideration, hopefully, all good.
Do we have any questions for Director Harris? Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, any public comment card?
We do not have any, Mr. Mayor.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak about the acquisition, the RFP, auditing services, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of a contract to request for proposals 25-114 to Malden and Jenkins for financial auditing services and with authorization for the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Councilman Brady. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Dorito. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously as well. That'll wrap up the new business portion of tonight's meeting and move on to public comment. So if there's anyone that's been sitting here waiting for your moment to come forward and speak on something, now is your chance to do so. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any reports this evening? If no one else will, I'll just say we had an amazing Memorial Day tribute service and I am very grateful to everyone who participated, including the volunteers at Alpharetta Rotary and Congressman McCormick, who's did a great job of sharing his vision as a former veteran. So thank you for attending if you were able, and if not, hopefully next year you can join us. That's the only report. I believe we may need an executive session this evening.
We do, very short one, a topic litigation.
Okay. That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Hype, so a second by Councilman Brady. All those in favor of assessing into executive session, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. We'll be back in a little bit. Dibby dibby dibby.
I think it's been a hard party. It's been a general.
At the first, he said they were with us.
The one trip we took to Colorado.
He and my wife, we lived together.
You know, it was a brand new strategy.
I was surprised with you in that I had the right year after.
Everything except my face.
I didn't have enough opportunity to get good on that.
I was like, man, I don't know.
Do we have a motion to reconvene? We have a motion to reconvene. Do we have a second by?
Second.
Councilman Brady? Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. Apparently I pushed the wrong button, so it does pass 4-1. Motion to adjourn. The motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
Second.